We'll start off with normal do with a prayer request list. Need to remember Ms. Lynn Vaden. We need to remember Lynn Vaden recovering from surgery. Linda Hale and family, her brother Joe McKinney passed away. Need to remember the family of Philip Day Brooks, who was a longtime employee of the school system. Need to remember Jennifer and Kim Maynard's father-in-law, Stanford Maynard, has cancer. Need to remember Caitlin Gregory, she's had a new baby. Need to remember Ms. Brenda Skurlock, this is Angel Williams' mother. Need to remember Howard Ballard, Ms. Rachel Kelly's stepdad. Chris Nixon, he's recovering from shoulder surgery. Continue to pray for Scotty Yaman, our fellow board member. Mahalia McCall, continue to pray for her recovery. Need to remember Cheryl Lawson, she's having surgery tomorrow. And Ed Taylor, which is Joe Taylor's uncle, we need to remember him, he's had a blood clot. Had a blood clot. Are there any others that we want to add to this list? If not, let's go to the Lord in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you thanking you for another day of life you've blessed us with. Father, for the health that we have, to be able to come out tonight, the opportunities and freedoms we have in this country to come and go as we please. Father, we know there are those tonight that don't have the health that we have, we want to pray for them. Father, we want to pray, special prayer tonight for those who lost loved ones, we just want to pray that you'll comfort them in a way that only you can. Father, we always, these meetings, want to pray for our school system, pray for its safety, especially of all of our employees and children here, Father. We just, we just want to pray that this will always be a safe learning environment, Father, that, that will always, the children always excel here, and Father, we'll always do the things we need to do as a board for this school system. Father, most of all this night, we want to thank you for your son, in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Whoops, and I do apologize. I was in a rush and a little bit off kilter. All right, we'll start off tonight with school updates. We're back in session, so we'll start having those at our monthly meetings. First off, we'll have Carriage Elementary and Ms. Shay Johnson.
Good evening, my name is LaShay Johnson, I'm the principal at Carriage Elementary. CES has not only been my home for my entire teaching career, it was also my home as a student, from kindergarten through sixth grade. So my passion for this school's success runs deep. This year, our focus is to create a respectful, loving culture built around teamwork and community. We began this journey over the summer by improving the appearance of our school. The first thing you will notice when you pull in is our parking lot. We now have two car rider lanes. By adding this additional lane, we are now able to dismiss car riders later, which gives teachers more instructional time each day. When you walk up to the building, you are welcomed by our red, white, and blue, In God We Trust, which is displayed on our front door. As you enter, you are greeted with our beautiful mural with positive writings. When we were designing this, we wanted the, we wanted the children to be able to put themselves into the painting. So all of the animals and children are silhouettes, so they are able to imagine themselves in the painting. As you walk through the building, you'll also notice that we have updated our bathrooms near the gym, and we have painted most of the hallways. Continuing with our focus on teamwork and support, all teachers have common planning times daily to work as a team to create and reflect on lessons and assessments. We are blessed to have an onsite Read to Be Ready literacy leader. She has time laid out in her schedule weekly to work with grade levels and observe their ELA instruction. This is a way for her to provide feedback on how they should be implementing their best practices. I've also been available to help teachers with their math best practices as we are getting into the school year. Our RTI literacy leader meets with our teachers at least monthly to discuss student data. During these meetings, they are looking at the students' data to see what we are doing, what's working, what's not, and how can we improve our instruction. Our RTI literacy leader also does interventions and also helps with creating the interventions that the RTI is working with. For families and students, we offer after-school activities and ways for parents to be involved within the school. We offer basketball for students K through 4th, which are coached by parent volunteers. We have also added a cheer team this year, which we had such a good turnout that we ended up having an individual team, cheer team for each basketball team. Next week, we start Owl's Nest, which is an early morning and an afternoon school program. This is a great way for students to get extra help on homework and to gain new experiences throughout the year. CES also received a summer grant for a reading program, a reading camp, for two years in a row. This has been a great success both years, and it's offered to every student in the county. Carriage Elementary has an awesome team. We all work well together, we all work hard, and we all want what's best for our students. That's why I know we will continue to improve our enrollment, our parent involvement, and our academics throughout the year. Thank you.
Any questions? Ms. Johnson. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Now we'll move on to Gordonville Elementary School, Ms. Rachel Kelly.
Hello, my name is Rachel Kelly, and I'm Gordonsville Elementary's principal. This is my first year as principal. I started teaching 11 years ago at U-Melton Elementary School, and I taught in the second grade classroom there. And then I went to Gordonsville the next year and taught first grade until I became assistant principal last year. I'd like to thank the board for everything that you've done, for the opportunity that you've given me and our school, Mr. Smith for this opportunity, central office staff for always supporting us. Without you guys, we wouldn't be able to achieve all that we've done, so thank you very much. One thing I can say about Gordonsville Elementary School is they always strive for their best. They have high expectations for their students, but they don't only care about the academic side, we care about the whole student, which I think is very important, I think they go hand in hand. So this year, we're really focusing on growth mindset for our students. Teachers are working on things every day with their students to just incorporate that a little bit, because school is hard now, and students get frustrated. So I think it's very important for them to know it's okay to make mistakes, and you can learn from your mistakes. So that's one thing that we're really focusing on this year. Also, I believe our school is so successful because we have strong ties to our community. Businesses, local businesses, are constantly donating things, either their time or different items to our school. Our PTO has been instrumental in helping us buy Chromebooks and different programs to promote literacy within our schools. So that is something that's been very, we've been very fortunate for that. We also like to give our students opportunities to show their talents. Not every child plays sports. We're also doing the sports, the third and fourth grade basketball, fifth and sixth grade basketball, and they're wonderful programs, and we have many parent volunteers for that. But students also need different opportunities so that they can shine. And we have different programs, we have the Veterans Program, we have the Tennessee Program that allows students to teach, you know, their families and community members things that they're learning at school, but it also allows them a little time to make them feel special. Last year, we started an art show for our fourth grade students, and that was a big success for our school, and we plan on continuing that. We had our first Read Night last year, it was called Read Some More Books Night, to promote literacy within our community, and we're going to do that this year, too. It was a big success. Our Honor Club and our Book Club are very good at promoting community service projects, and it gets the whole school involved. So we're planning on doing lots of things so that, because I think it's important for students to know they need to give back to their communities. I'm so thankful for this opportunity. Gordonsville's very important to me, I also was a student there, and I want to thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Now we'll move to Smith County Middle, Ms. Kelly Bell.
Hi, I'm Kelly Bell. This is my first year at Smith County Middle School. I'm very honored to be here. First of all, start now, the starting gate. The school, out of a score of from one to five, they scored a five on the state assessment last spring, so I'm walking into a really good, stable situation, strong teachers, incredible students, and parents who really, really are supportive of the school. We're, I mean, they're welcome to come anytime, to come in, eat lunch, we have them come eat lunch with us. You've got to have a community supporting your school, or you don't have anything. We all have to hold hands together. So I have a handout for you there in front of you. Our enrollment has increased, and it has it there, 319, and by grade level. And then some things I thought you would want to know about the school as well, and I'm very impressed with this. All the student athletes at Smith County Middle School are TMSAA certified, every single one. We host the county tournament, the fifth, sixth grade tournament, looking very forward to that. We have, we offer the same sports as the high school, and my background, I've been an elementary principal, and I was a high school principal for 12 years, and I know how important it is, the middle school, that's the knees of your program, and the elementary schools are the feet and legs of your program. You have to have strong feeder programs to have a strong high school program. We take that very seriously, and we hope that we prepare the students, not only academically, but socially, physically, emotionally, we want them ready for high school and the demands of high school. So we take that responsibility very seriously, that we provide the high school sports with our future athletes. We have a beta program that this year, we started a fifth grade program, we start, we call National, and they said we can offer a fifth grade beta program, it has to be elementary, but it's certified elementary, then sixth, seventh, and eighth will be middle school, but they are going to be participating, HOSA. We're very blessed to have that for seventh and eighth grades. And then 4H, they're going to work with fifth through eighth grade this year. So we're really tickled with all of those, those offer so many opportunities. Plus, I didn't know if you knew this or not, but we offer Special Olympics year-round with a sport that's offered at that time, Joseph Hyde heads that up, and with each sport that's in season, they have a Special Olympics for that. So that's super cool. We're going to offer a fall and spring talent show. Anytime you put a student on a stage in front of a group of people, you have, I mean, they can do anything if you can get them in front of a group of people and present. And we are offering a talent show, both fall and spring. And then, and I want you to know, too, we're going to have a spelling, a school-wide spelling bee, and speech contest. Every student in the building has to present, either in a group or a speech, in the spring and in the fall and in the spring. And we also have a big speech contest, which we hope it's, it's a big one, because we really want to get those kids up there presenting in front of groups of people, because in every genre, you have to do that. Now the library, I wanted to show that off, we have a strong library, a strong reading program, we've really revived the AR program, and it's through incentives and motivation and what the kids, I always, I comment on any girl or guy walking down the hall with a book. That's a big, big deal, because a reader is a leader, truly, all of you all, you back that up. Also, all the students will have been star tested by the end of this week, so we will pretty much know exactly what reading level they are on, and provide them what they need to get them motivated to like reading, to love reading. Yes, believe it or not, you can grow a kid into loving to read if you get the right books in their hands that they're interested in. And the theme of the library this year is Tennessee, and all bell ringers that she has in the library will be about Tennessee. That all teachers do a math and reading, all teachers in my building are reading and math teachers as well, no matter their content specialty. They have to do a reading and math bell ringer for every class, every day. And, and I do guided planning with all teachers, that means one planning a week, I sit down and meet with that teacher, and we go over their lesson plans, student data in their classes, assessments, because we want to make sure that what is said going on in the classroom is going on in the classroom. We do walk, the walkthroughs, but the main thing is, I've told Mr. Smith this before, I'm a believer in over-communication is good communication. The more you communicate, the better off the whole team is, and the students end up being successful from. Also, Ms. Holliday's going to start a book blog, so be watching for that, that's a really cool thing, too. And I wanted to brag, Smith County Middle School, they have collected, I think last year, a 13-gallon trash can full of pool tabs, and that provides a four-member family, a five-night stay at the Ronald McDonald House. And those of you who have stayed with loved ones at a hospital, that's very heartwarming, and that gets the students trying, looking beyond themselves, helping others. I love when they do civic-minded things like that. Now, every Monday morning, we have a certificate that we have made special for the kids, it's a Wings High Owl Pride, and that's a student who represents Owl Pride, and Owl Pride is someone who gives 110%, always giving their best, always looking to do kind things for others, and is nice to everybody. We really want to promote that and get that in front of students to let them know it is noticed. Those things that you think no one sees, they do see. And we give them a little certificate, and I put them on, we have a new Facebook page, so you'll see them on that in our reminder. We have a poetry night in the fall and the spring. We're going to have a fall formal this time with a red carpet and spotlights, and announcing the young ladies and men as they enter the fall formal. We want to, they're very excited about that. And we have a football homecoming, and the dates are there. Football homecoming is the 20th of September, eighth grade night, September 6th, and then basketball homecoming is November 29th, and eighth grade night will be December 13th. Have any questions?
How's the book blog doing work? I'm interested in that myself, because I'm a reader, so I'm interested in that.
Oh, and Ms. Holliday is so awesome, I wish you would ask her about that, you'll give her probably a one-hour explanation, so she's very excited about that kind of stuff. And Dave Silcox, I love it, we're going to start arch read program at this fall, too.
Next, we have our school nutrition supervisor, Ms. Stephanie.
Not Stephanie Johnson, Stephanie Dyer.
Sorry, Stephanie.
That's all right. Good evening, my name is Stephanie Dyer. I'm the new school nutrition supervisor here for Smith County Schools. I have taken Ms. Becky Cookston's position after she's retired from fulfilling this position for 17 years, so I have some really big shoes to fill. But to tell you a little bit about myself, I'm originally from Macon County, but have many, many ties to Smith County, one of those being my husband, Matt Dyer. We have one son, Atticus, and we live here in town. I started my school nutrition career in 2010 as the DeKalb County School Nutrition Supervisor, and I worked there for a little over four years, and I left there to go work for the Department of Education as a school nutrition consultant for the Ober-Cumberland, and I've worked there for about three and a half years. But I'm so excited to be back in a local district such as Smith County, and I look forward to working with each of you all. But to share a little bit about what's going on in school nutrition, lunch prices have not increased this year, so that's always good to hear. We also are offering universal free breakfast again this year, so obviously, that's a free breakfast program to all students, so we really encourage them to take advantage of that. Also, September menus are on the website and are available, and they're on the Smith County website under School Nutrition, if they would like to look for those. And lastly, something that we're very proud to bring to Smith County is, next summer is the Summer Feeding Program. And we are still working on all the logistics for that program, but we're excited to provide that program to Smith County. We feel like there's a huge need here in Smith County to, for some hungry students out there, and get those kiddos fed during the summertime. So if you guys have any questions for me? All right, well, I look forward to working with you. If I can help you all in any way, please let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Dyer. Now we'll move on to our awards and recognitions. Mr. Steve Jones from Synergistic, if you'd come forward.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, superintendents, educators, thank you for having me here. My name is Steve Jones, I'm with Synergistic, and we've been your energy conservation consultant for the last four and a half years, coming up on the end of our five-year contract. Before I get into this, I'd like to say something, it's not often that you get to stand in front of people that are on school boards, educators that do so much for our kids. I'm a product of Alabama Public Schools, I have two daughters that have been through K-12 in Alabama. It's amazing what y'all do, you don't get thanked enough, so I want to thank you on behalf of myself personally and everybody in the community, it's a great thing you do. As I get into the reason we're here, in October of '13, Dr. Truman Atkins, who's a colleague of mine, longtime educator in Tennessee, came to Smith County and wanted to talk about energy conservation. And we talked about what we thought we could do to save energy, which would turn into dollars for the school district. And I'm proud to say today, as the contract comes to an end, that Smith County Education has reduced their energy consumption in five years, almost 25%. That's a big number. And you look at, what we do is, we take a baseline year, and we took 2012, yeah, 2012 and 2013, in January of 2013, your energy cost was over $100,000. In January of this year, it was down to $62,000. That, that's big. That's a huge thing, that you're able to take that money and redirect it into programs that a school needs that may not be funded. I applaud the intuition of the board and the superintendent. David Nixon, applaud for what you've done as driving this, it probably couldn't have been done without you. I, I just can't stress how much, how, how being able to look forward and look downrange and see the need for conservation when school districts get on board with it and the support is there, it's a very successful program. So congratulations. And we've got a few awards to present, David, can you come help me? The first one we've got, probably the least important, but very important, it's the Energy Excellence Award, and what this says, it's from Synergistic, Dr. Spears, our president and owner, it says, "For conserving our nation's precious resources through the excellent implementation of the Synergistic Energy Management Program, and for serving as a model of energy conservation to fellow educational organizations throughout the country." So David, thank you, I'm going to let you hold that for just a second, then we'll try to get a group picture. And then this, which will not fit through a drive-through, so don't try to catch that, that's representing the $1.2 million that have been saved to date, reduction of energy costs with Smith County, and we've still got a little time to go, I'm hoping we can get to that $1.5 million. But for a district of this size to reduce your energy consumption that much is a fabulous thing, and I applaud you. So thank you very much, and I'm going to give you this, you think we can get a picture with the group? You think we can do that?
The whole group.
All right, up to you.
It's, it's a team, it's been a team.
Absolutely, if I say we do that, if that's okay, can we gather around somewhere?
Yes. Just where Brian's going to.
Yeah, just anywhere. What do you think it'll be about?
You get it right here.
Yeah.
Eddie, can you get it right here?
Yeah. We have a. National Forward of Education. Am I too tall for anybody? I've never, I've never been told I was too tall for anything. Thank you very much, congratulations, good to see y'all, congratulations.
All right, we will move on to our consent items. Do we have a motion on our consent items?
Make a motion with chef consent item eight three.
Mr. Apple, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Gatton-Bine, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have our superintendent actions, hope everyone's had a chance to look at those. Now we'll move on to New Business A. This is Policy Amendment 5.106 and 5.118, it's about the background investigations, application and employment. This is a second final reading, we have a motion on New Business A.
Make a motion on New Business A.
Ms. Gatton-Bine, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New Business B, this is Policy Amendment 5.305, family in medical leave, this is also a second final reading, we have a motion on New Business B.
Make a motion.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New Business C, this is Policy Amendment 3.600, insurance management, this is the first reading of two readings. We have a motion on New Business C.
I'll make one.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New Business D, this is New Policy 4.608, transcript alteration, this is also the first of two readings. We have a motion on New Business D.
Make a motion with chef, Steve.
Mr. Apple, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Gatton-Bine, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New Business E, this is Policy Amendment 5.802, qualifications and duties of the director of schools, this is also the first of two readings. We have a motion on New Business E.
So move.
Ms. Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New Business F, this is Policy Amendment 6.314, corporal punishment, this is the first reading of two readings. We have a motion on New Business F. Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor, any discussion? And this was voted on at the principals meeting?
Yes.
And this is what?
They, we let them go into legal boundaries, and I think it was unanimous, is what they voted to do.
Okay.
Policy A.
What they asked to do, we let them roll it out.
Was Policy A that will allow corporal punishment with a written parental permission?
It's got to meet all these criteria.
Right, right. If there's no more discussion, we'll vote, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New Business G, this is New Policy 1.701, school district planning, this is the first of two readings. We have a motion on New Business G.
Make a motion on New Business G.
Ms. Gatton-Bine, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore, any discussion?
Kind of. It goes with this, sort of. Last year, we did the TSBA day where Tammy came here, which that kind of goes, it's related to this policy, I guess is what I'm getting at, as far as long-range planning, and I think that's one of the most productive things as a board that we have done together, I thought it was great. And since we're just talking about this particular policy, I wanted to bring it up, and we can move it to discussion if we want to, or if it's more appropriate to do it for discussion later, about planning that again and having her come back, because that avoids all of us, and particularly with the new board members coming on, I think it would be important for all of us to kind of sit down and get.
I had actually done thought about putting it on next meetings, agenda for discussion.
Because I think we did it last November, I think.
Yeah, I was going to ask you if that's something that y'all want to do again.
I thought it'd be great.
We can put it on next, next agenda for discussion.
We can tie it into this.
Yeah, right, yeah, that was kind of my thought process.
They said the same.
But I know last year, when we planned it, we had to give her several months, and then the entire board had to commit to being here, and, you know, there was quite a bit that went along with that, but I wanted to bring that up.
We'll get that and reconnect and see what options.
Maybe get some dates.
Right, get some dates, and then we can come with a discussion with some dates if everybody's, can do that.
Okay, but that's the only discussion I had, was, it's kind of quasae. But that's the only discussion I had was, it's kind of quasivertlated, I guess.
If there's no more discussion on this, we'll vote. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business H. New Policy 3.220, District Water Testing. This is also the first of two readings. We have a motion on new business H.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Gattenbaum, any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to new business I. This is Policy Amendment 4.206, Homebound Instruction. This is the first of two readings. We have a motion on new business I.
Make a motion, Mr. Business I.
Mr. Apple, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Manning, any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business J. This is Approval of Fiscal Year '19 State-Level Funded Grants. Do we have a motion on new business J? Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor, any discussion? If not, this does involve money, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Right, it's that time of year they start coming through. New business K. This is Approval of School Fees Countywide. Do we have a motion on new business K?
So maybe.
Ms. Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion?
Good. I like to say a little bit. We've been doing this for a period of time, and some y'all probably didn't ever even know we'd have done this, not done with lawful money. This is money that is funded through BEB. We had a guy that came, you know, and he was fantastic. He'd been a superintendent. He was a CPA and a lawyer.
David Hurst.
And he gave us some insight on some things that was unbelievable that we were doing wrong and didn't know we were doing. And this is one of the things he highly suggested that we do, just to make sure that the public was aware of it. And it's nothing different than we've ever done, but just thought we needed to do some of the recommendations he gave us.
You mean doing wrong by as far as not getting these approved by the board? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, this was, and we didn't have, nobody around us was doing it. But he said that was a big thing he recommended going forward. And he told us several things. He was great in some stuff. We were doing all our athletic and our booster clubs. He dreamed it'd be good for the board and our coaches to hear. I mean, he, some stuff they're not doing intentionally, but we'd get in trouble for it. We just kind of avoid that going forward.
Through the years, some rules have changed, and it's just, he's just a good speaker to let us know the updated versions of laws and regulations.
He could relate, as he'd say, where everybody at.
And now for the fees, I guess the question would be for anybody that would be asking them, for anybody on free and reduced.
Free and reduced.
Okay, that's, just want to make sure that everybody knows that also.
Fee waivers.
Fee waivers. There's no more discussion, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. We are going to move new business L until after executive session. If that's okay with everyone? Got a question that could be answered. Move on to new business M. This is Tennessee Together Student Survey. Do we have a motion on new business M?
Motion to approve new business M?
I'll say it.
Ms. Moore, Mr. Manning, any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business N. This is a bid approval for gasoline. Do we have a motion on new business N?
Make a motion.
Ms. Gattenbaum, Mr. Apple, seconds. Any discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business O. This is the election of Board Chair and Vice Chair for 1819 schools. Do we have any... I'm sorry. We'll start with the Board Chair. Do we have any recommendations?
Nominate Robin Smith.
I'll second it.
Right, second. So there's more? Any more? Any other recommendations? Mr. Taylor, I mean, Ms. Moore and Mr. Taylor?
No, yeah, Tyler's second.
Second, yes. I always forget how we have to do this.
Well, let me make it easy. I'll make a motion, nomination ceased, and you be elected by nomination.
There you go.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm abstaining, by the way. Can I abstain? I can abstain. I'm abstaining.
We didn't ask you if you wanted it. I guess you're all right with it.
Yeah, I can do it one more year, maybe.
You tell him.
All right, do we have any recommendations for Vice Chair?
I'm gonna recommend Robin Moore.
Ms. Moore?
Thanks, Tina.
I was... Mr. Apple, second. Ms. Gattenbaum, Mr. Apple, seconds. And I will go ahead and say let's cease right there. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll abstain from that, Ms. Regina.
And we didn't ask you either?
No, you didn't. Thank you.
All right. Now we will move on to our discussion, item A. This is our student enrollment numbers for August 2018. And I guess I'll turn over, Mr. Smith.
Hopefully, that you had a chance to look at it more down about nine, nine hundred students countywide. I thought it would be good if y'all know what in your packet, just kind of trending. Cordial Elementary School looks like the numbers, the schools leaning to or actually starting to go up. Cordial Elementary's up about 24 students. And I've got three here that I'm looking at, so kind of looking at the current. The FEED is actually down about 20, 25 students, which is good because of the school size. We don't, I'm sure they don't want to lose them, but Forks River is growing steadily, seven to 10 students a year the past couple of years. GS is down from last year, about 15 students. Going for high school is almost dead on what it's been for the last, then just, it's up what it was three years ago, but it's almost dead on what it was last year. Same to the number, 241 at New Milton. Your steel about the same as Smith County Middle. The big one, I guess, was where negative 35 from last year at Smith County High School. We had a big graduating class. And then Union Heights is just about the same, so that's the difference. Now your numbers fluctuate now.
So defeated in Smith County High School is where you're being?
Smith County High School's, you know, almost half of the numbers, that's it. What we were exactly a year to date.
Any question for Mr. Smith? Any discussion? If not, we want to add another discussion item. Or maybe not add a discussion, but have a discussion. We want to recognize our outgoing members on our board tonight. Ms. Tina Gattenbaum from District 8, and Mr. Shane Campbell, of course, is not here, from District 3, and Ms. Scotty Yaman from District 6. And I think the BOE has something for you, Ms. Tina. And if you want to say something, say whatever you want.
Thank you.
But don't say whatever you want.
Careful, huh?
I know better than to say that to you.
You know, it's been a privilege and an honor to serve for the past four years with such a great group of people. I have absolutely enjoyed this, and it will definitely be an experience I'll never forget. I hope that the community knows the impact that I've made. I hope the community knows the work that I've done. And I hope they appreciate all of that. And I love Forks River. Forks River will always be my school. Was very thankful to have two of my children, my only two children graduated valedictorians out of that school. So I appreciate everybody and everything that you folks have all done for me, and thank you. And thank you for this.
We thank you, Tina. We know there's been a lot of things done that people don't know from these members, and we really, really appreciate it. Now, our new board members, we have a certificate of election. And if you would come, or Ms. Gina can come over there. If you would stand up and I call your name, put some faces with some names for people here in the crowd that may not know you. Mr. Marty McHale from District 3, Mr. Ricky Shouders from District 6, Mr. Scotty Lewis from District 8, and of course, Mr. Taylor over here was re-elected. Everybody knows Mr. Taylor. For your new board members, August the 28th is when you'll be sworn in by the county mayor at the Turner Building. And if you could, just call or email Stacy Bush for an appointment.
And there's a business card in your packet.
That will have her number. And you can all go at the same time, be sworn in, or go on your own time, however that works out. I know everybody's busy. So make sure you get an appointment. Mr. Shouders has a 3:00 appointment time already. Okay. So if you want to work around that 3:00, y'all can all get in together. If you have to go in, just set your time up with Ms. Stacy. Paper will be there to take pictures. Be expecting that. And our next board meeting will be September 18th. Of course, we meet at 5:00 every third Tuesday, unless something is noted, and we have changed some of the meetings because of fall break. And we'll go, next month, we'll go over those. And the picture for the new board will be at 4:30. If you can get here by 4:30 next meeting, we'll all get together and hopefully shirt ties.
Jacket.
Jacket.
I'm just gonna be a brat and say put on a jacket.
Put on a jacket. Yeah, she's done, Ms. Gina's done hammered me right here. So so if you could, just be here at 4:30. And normally, Ms. Gina will put that on the front of the board packet, so you'll know.
They'll need IDs too. We all, we have IDs.
School IDs.
Still about the school, yeah.
Yes, our badge machine is not working right now, so we'll...
We've actually ordered a new one. It's a better, it'll be updated with the keyness.
And we'll get into some other things that are required. There's a TSBA-required meeting for new board members, even if you've served on the board before. And there's a couple of other things. We'll get into those next meeting.
The badges are helpful, though, when we go into schools. People know who we are. It really, and it keeps people, I think it keeps awkwardness down if they're not really sure who you are and they don't really want to ask.
Everybody now has a Smith County Board of Education email.
Yes.
And we need to use those email addresses for school business. So I'm gonna start emailing through those email addresses.
And she will need everybody, next meeting, need everybody's phone number.
Tonight.
Oh, you need it tonight?
Because next meeting, we'll have to send.
The text out, correct. Correct. If we could, everybody could, that she doesn't have, she doesn't have your...
Can we set up a remind for the board, just the board members? You know, I think that might be helpful.
It might be.
Just like the meeting, or just like...
Well, just like, because we get texts from LeBron, and then sometimes Gina for changes or whatever. And if we had that, that way wouldn't everybody get notified at the same time? And then my phone don't go off 12 times with everybody saying that they're gonna be there and whatever.
Okay. Do we have any questions about our annual policy review? Of course, there was none in July, so we have no questions.
I have one other question about the stuff that's in this packet. Do we have to be fingerprinted?
Tracy. They're asking about fingerprints.
Do we have to be fingerprinted?
That was something that...
We talked about this, and this is my personal, I don't, we can't give an exact law on it, but I do think that for your protection, that because you're going to these schools, and so we can say we're 100% for our board members.
It's employees that do come in contact with students in schools.
And we will be around students.
Be there on official business, not that, not anybody I think, not bad, but we need to, I think it'd be a good thing that we would say 100% of our staff is background checked.
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, I just saw the BMO, and, you know, I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. I mean, I don't mind doing it, but I didn't know if that was something that was intentional for the board.
We discussed it just this last few days, so we didn't know. We can't really get a law on it, but I do think it would be a very good idea for everybody that you're going to contact the kids.
I think at some point, that's gonna come down as law. You may as well just go ahead and...
Have to go ahead and do it.
I think it looks good, too, to say to the public that everybody just went through this and...
So it sounds like he's saying yes.
Yes. The beat around the bush, yes.
Yes.
You don't have to, but...
Okay. No policy review, do we have a motion to enter into executive session?
Make a motion.
Mr. Apple, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Enter into executive session. If we can get everybody to clear out, please.